Hello 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 everyone welcome to today's live stream. Let me check if it is going fine. If you're here say hi. And I will not to guess it's streaming right now wonderful wonderful. Yeah, there's again a busy and lazy week at the same time. I have uh. Haven't done much on the scene but I did some scanning of the leaves and I made the new setup. We will make a video on that like how my setup is the simple uh photometric stereo setup. Uh I'm improving it more and more so I can scan my own leaves and textures and everything. And with that I wanted to work on our scene as I shown last time let me open up my pure rough. Yeah, as per our thing. So you can see also in here. Okay, so here's the link you can go crazy and check out everything we have uh to offer. Uh let me post the link in the. Chat and notify everyone once more. Maybe people will join if not then that's fine. Okay. I've notified so people keep joining and if you join and say hello in the chat. Mainly if you have any question I want to know anything. So just say hello in the chat and post your questions related anything uh game art basically not random stuff. Oh do not know long time long time. Yeah yeah definitely it's been a while I'm I'm doing good still kicking still making stuff and still making. Progress on things trying to make progress busy um and yeah um. Still trying to work my head around how to achieve the closer detail so maybe trying to focus on smaller thing. So if I show here this is what we have. This is some new concepts I created uh you see I love this layout uh with some gravestones with the wall stuff uh. And much more better layout and this is for the greenery I love the greenery. In his shots and overall layout okay so from here. So what I'm gonna do I'm gonna make some of this polish basically make some path. More polished and also make uh some scattering better scattering. Uh so this is the opposite side from the bridge so this is the other side and from this bridge this is the opposite side like how we can. But it's like nice in the valley um. And it's like really nice morning cloudy light which is soft soft light not very harsh which is. What do we want to achieve so we have birch already in the scene. And some of the grass and then we can try you know push for you know scattering manually. I would publish the terrain and try to make this place also okay as per this. And in our previous concept it was not clear where it was going but I really love how this you know. Made it more permanent okay this is going to exactly where and there is a slope and there's. A flat area for the church and that's path again we were making a path going beyond it. But this one is here we can turn uh it inside. So it's a path going here and we can see clearly a path going in and there are caves on the church which is just normal stuff. And the mountains are much more crisp and crazy. So either I can try making these new mountains uh and uh you know making both of the variations. More greener and more snowy we can try that out later on. But overall I love this scene but wish I had wood green in there that is the goal. And but I love also like how this is much more cleaner but you have much more trees on the surrounding. Right here you have much more larger mountains it's not it's not hard to tell how it is. The tundras and the higher mountain select much more bear. And here we are covered with you know trees in the lower part. Yeah so that's basically the goal still making something mix of it I know it's confusing but I'm trying to find something which. You know get us the result or done basically this is our. This is stuff what we made last time because we experiment a lot they just look like a bunch of. Randomness in there I love the this water is working at least. Yeah and yeah so let's start with simply our trees in there. So let me see we had chestnut our trees so if I go bring our. Things hmm. By own trees. So we have Aspen and we have chestnut. Yesterday we didn't do the bark on any so I will probably do. The bark on this and maybe try scattering this and see how that reacts to everything uh if I show you. Right so this is the tree right now which is decent right but we can polish later on as well. And also as we saw last time uh me if I have it still open on this one. This one so there's a procedural foliage tool it have birch and beach uh. You know please sets in there I still have to play with it more maybe we will try it out how this uh works more. Uh I want to I played with it little but I want to make play with it more and make a separate video. Just how this system work which is the goal of channel as I said last time as well so. As always like we have our tree here and what we need is uh. Birch box so we go to rock catalog which is our. Favorite side for bunch of stuff so we can go to material and we search birch. Or S pen so that we have birch atlases so we got the leaves from here only if you remember. We got these leaves and replace it in our texture. Also reach out to these guys and ask like if I can contribute I'm scanning but it's not up till high quality. But as soon as I have them processed I will show you guys but for now I'm scanning a bunch of uh. Leaves basically before the autumn comes. So I can basically take any of these we don't need to go too deeper because it's uh just a tree bark. Okay so four how it's one by one meter. This two by two meter is better I want a larger one otherwise it will be too much repetitive. One by one meter again why there is only one meter. Could be more. One meter. They intentionally made it one meter or seems like they intentionally kept it only one meter surfaces. One meter yeah. Now I totally believe they want to keep only one meter. So we have this which is good we can use this and the biggest and we have this. Yeah these are like most uh the looking similar so. Let's go with something this one only. Don't know I have login already let me login. Just give me a quick second uh. Nice I downloaded this so. I'll import it as soon as we have it we should have. A bark material if you don't. Yeah this is uh something similar. We can check. Mark uh rock will be fine too even tileable is fine too because it have. We just need to create M R A. And we did it downloaded. If I put it into. Yeah I think I had downloaded it before. Okay so we have bunch of textures I had downloaded before. Although this is the one. You know there are a bunch of these leaves. This is what we have done right now. So I'll take this one and we uh rename the textures uh to proper one. So let me call it. Call it D X three S pen. One A. Boom has been one A. Bark may bark first maybe let's go. And P two. This closeness height we don't need non. Normal map we can put height in the normal map because it's not subsurface because uh blue channel of uh. Is is this kind of A O and we can put height map in there we have the did it in many. Many places yeah. So yep so this is basically if we look at the tile level and we have we have put M R A. In there because it's tileable but for the bark there is nothing metallic in the bark no we can use. Like here we have S R S subsurface roughness A O and the normal map. So but we can use that in many places if we need to okay so just to. Well you know that uh that is possible to do it and I'll take number map it is. Seems like direct text only. Yeah seems like direct text only so there's not. If we give issue we will flip the green but it seems like it so. The N R M. I think there was a really nice uh script called Easy Channel Becker. Okay it's uh if you search on art station you will find it gets its unpack and pack. Okay so basically uh for metallic we just put black image and roughness. And image inclusion here and alpha we just need a black uh white image. Uh and I can scroll image. Uh in word it's also like you can do the green channel in word also in here if you want to so I'll do this and I will save uh. Um. Alpha okay let's just do the alpha. And then I take that image and I put it here so it will do the calculation let it load up. So then we will see it will give us the image which will save. So it's a metallic this is black roughness and M R A which are making portable tileable. It's slow that's one thing surely it's made in Python I believe but yeah he's uh. He's the guy I think it's we'll check after this is done so here's uh we can save image and uh. And we can. Save it here with this. It's not this one this one. It saves P N G always so. What happened? Yeah it cried that no let's save uh. It has G P G. Also. P N G is fine as well. Yeah so we have all textures and let me show you. The sky. The same and. There's no art session what? A bunch of cool stuff. Yeah this is the guy basically doing it so you guys can be check his art session they have it there. Okay cool let me import my textures into. Until where is it? Cool you and. Here we can go from. Where is our bridge? This is material. Materials so I'll copy from here because use the same. Right and then this is one is crazy yeah this is one M R A N R M. And tightly basically. Um S pen copy. Copy this. M I three S pen one M bark. And this is leave just to properly name them. Uh references. We even downloaded the five point seven installed it so we can try that out also like if you guys have any question that does that. See yeah that's let me know if you have any questions okay. Nice so let's replace the textures quick and easy. Nice they will be definitely to tile it more because. We know our tree is gonna cry. Nice all of them and this is empty we just put. Park. And it's. Stretching I think it's because when we brought it it was not perfect so it's. So we have it. Which is fine on all of them. Wonderful. Yes. I think it's the when it was made it was uh basically. We is. It's stretching basically on our thing uh on one axis so maybe we can try doing. It is our material maybe maybe both of the different axes maybe and then maybe it work. But for now I'll just the only thing I want to do is in this is brighten this texture. And the mapping and everything we can do it in. So we have brighter bark here you see. We have now brighter part maybe we can contrast it a bit. So yeah so this is much more. So is it just pop basically which I wanted and we can replace these chest chestnuts with the. With our purchase and we can even make variations if we need it so let me just is it I think it's using the. The procedural so which is good because you can replace that easily in our procedural tool if I go back. Into our procedural and we have. We have chestnut in here. Or forest let's check yep here. So we have chestnut foliage type added here which we can simply replace with our S pen so S pen also foliage types here. It's chestnut so like if I take S pen so we only have three. You know put the. Maybe this and. This different one and we save. Just need to resimulate the. Our volume. Then what what? Did we painted manually? Nope it's from procedural volume only. Did I save it? Saved. Forest have. What is only? Yep look at that. Crazy amount of forest we need to control the numbers that we did not control. You yeah so that's we can go here. Can we copy copy all properties in the and paste that's wonderful. So density let's check how much it is on our. Chestnut so we just copied from there. Where is it will direct close the content browser. Yep so let's check on chestnut it's more what did I change? Just try if we painting. So in our. A one yes. Density is more. I don't think we changed much. Except this. Exclusion layer. Which we can add. Nice and. All. Spread okay this is what we have. And I will. You know remove this just keep this one for now. Yeah much better. Yeah lesser we need to transfer this is just the value we need to transfer on all the others this is the one. Plus strings so I will copy. And go to. Paste. And we can do it in uh global I think metrics also. We will select all of the keys I don't know if that is there um as action. Where is metrics research? Yeah so edit selection properties metrics when you open you get this yeah so usually get. You know. Most of the settings here okay then you can simply change like I mentioned uh average spread I want one thousand. Yeah and it works on it it basically update on all of them that's why I save. Oh you see you can do it individually or you select all and do it once. So it's like really helpful when you have a lot of assets to do it once so you can do it directly through it. Now we can basically duplicate later on and uh simply I can add four we have now so B. C and D right and we have E also so what we can do we can. Look at this. E. And inside this we'll put. This and we can control each of the tree if it's a smaller one we can do more if it's a big one we can do less. All of those thing we can do here. Which is again I feel is awesome. And let's do the E. For example for the E you want the more of them I can you know reduce the spread variation five. Hundred and there is also like growing shade and definitely exclusion layer we need. It was uh layer six. Yeah that we have to do for all of them I think we didn't do it so what we can do again. Yeah, that we have to do for all of them. I think we didn't do it. So what we can do again. Select all of them and I say open. Should be here in property mi- matrix. And I has exclusion layer and select all of them and I'll say undo. Layer six. That's why all of them have it. So you save it, done. And now we can simply. Select. Resimulate. See, now we have. This will emerge in. This one is rocks. So we see. Much of purchase in here. Not covering on the because we gave the layer, the grass layer, so it's growing only on the grass layer. And how uh spread variance is basically you can tell, okay, this one is how big this tree is. So visually they will interact less or uh could uh not interact, intersect less basically. Uh let's see who is here. Uh hello Vishal, how are you? Uh glad to see you, Zan employees. Hello, will you, will you use the number three? Awesome. If you guys have any question, you can ask, okay, anytime. Uh happy to answer. So I'm trying to fixing the foliage today. So yeah, so we'll just put more. We need to fix this distance of. Just popping because we don't have billboard. I remember we made billboards as L O D also for this, you see. It can handle polygons but the distant one we kept as billboard after this. We do made billboards for this. So billboards could be just simply a image which is uh which could be rendered uh from any software. I wish we could make it here. In itself, but the distance one we have to control. I'm not sure how the name and distance work in this. And there is one setting we can do try out. Uh for example, if I go back here. In here is like in it somewhat and select preserve area, right? So it's false right now. So we can see if we can make difference, I will do it in on other screen. And we say preserve area. Again, we can do it in 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 the metrics. It would have been easy. Yeah, I mean to all. And say wall, let's see. And did it make a difference? I think it made a little difference. But not much because it's like a lot of small leaves. And it gone. So we'll check if there is any. Distance uh for it. I'll then close all this. Okay. Man, it takes so much time. I saved all. Why does it take so much time? It's slow. Yes. Funny. So now we'll just check if uh. If there are. There are settings in the trees uh in here in the name and distance. So I already won. There is percent of triangle max triangle count welding. We can try, we say, okay, foliage. Does it make difference? Let's let me try these settings. And. Change the basically distance setting of the mesh. So it could be in the mesh or it could be. Does not change much. You can just change see in number of LEDs, create LEDs and everything. Just do the foliage. Faster also and. You see, this is reduction. Let us see. Collisions. What is any specific? There is level of details. Never stream, should I? That will be crazy because you can, there is a, there is a command on there, you can force L O D zero. So I don't uh put LEDs in there, but I think that will be crazy. If we don't take consider any because it's really heavy. Heavy uh leaves. There, okay. So we have uh much of it there and also we had the grass with other materials which we will do. And first let's fix this path. And like if you need this mesh or not, um I believe we have it. In there, where is my planter? And actually, let me. Mesh. Road. So this was the mesh we are making, the initial initial one basically. Just make this naturalness and I have this group that edge is not impacted. We can, you know, keep it median. Give that. Zero. And we can see actually in in edit also like how much it is impacted. So it don't look odd after displacement. So we can move it. To match at least the corner. Right? It don't look odd. In the school. Perfect. Right, so this will, uh we have some displacement, other things applied on it, it will not in the rendering mode. Let's try. Maybe we did it too much. Slide. Maybe we have, I think, simple one. And do this and here we can say keep corners. Also in this one, we say keep corners. And we have. I think subdivision can impact our corner, but we'll see how much it does. Almost perfect. Okay, cool. So we can export this one again uh and how much is. Is how much it is, so we can check. It's eighteen thousand, but if you feel this is too much, we can decimate also afterwards. Feel this is too much. Simply search and decimate and we say, okay, we want just point one. And we have a few. And I believe the U Vs will be. Happy only. Will not be, you know, impacted that much. I is tiling also, corner to corner with that. But uh there's sometimes you have these issues like this. Okay, so depending on how much we want. Imagine I want to keep this much. Yeah, and then I can simply because I have. Well, there's something. Newish look glossy because it's a new alpha. I mean, it's it seems different. I think they were talking about the this uh improving this. The coach and. We can manually export it as well. Church, mesh, environment, road. It's not there, what? Done. Let's get back. Here is our mesh. Uh okay, this is the one we had and we can, okay, this is lost cause. Import path is gone, so we can. Church. Mesh environment road. And then we can reimport. Here. And this we can use now in our mesh, which is again from landscape. Splines. Select all segments and here is the mesh which we can put in there. Well. Yeah, I I believe this gave some issue. So let's see if we have dimensions. See it's saying in it, but it's a zero block all. But this one also, so that's why we. Just have approximate size here and this one approximate size is weird. This one also have a size. So this one was the issue. With this. So let's check if we had some issue with the transformation. I don't know what's uh. It's here, mesh is here, right? But if you see here, it's a expro- approximate size zero, zero, zero. Right in the middle. Uh but or not on this, not on this. So that's why the last time it was not visible. So let me try in copying it in the. I'll make it one B. We have already, so. So the same mesh now see it have a proximity size. So I don't know what's the issue with this. Because it uh does not like basically. And now. Select all and it's selected and we can import it, you see. I see. Mesh. And if you feel uh. Let me see if we still have it. Yeah, we have libido. It is. Oh, but it's not stretching. Yeah, here it's not stretching. So it is good. So this works basically overall. Okay, and now we can simply selected export. As a place with a B one and now we'll. Reimport. It update the mission. And also with this, we can uh simply select all and we can, you know, uh. Effect the deform the landscape. Yeah, and how much does it deform? How does it deform? We have to check. And how. Landkeep, raise terrain, lower terrain, that is there. And which layer we want to put it on is also there. This is spline mesh. Let's just say like not raise. And we say, okay. Nothing much. There's virtual texture which is good. There's nothing like how much should it lower basically. But we can manually lower it also if it does not work. But overall, I'm. A more open to, you know, give it the same texture in there that they are, you know, with the spread and everything, it's working. Yes, perfect. This mesh. Good, we can try giving it a texture now. Stilable texture which we might have already. Materials we don't have. Let me put. Pretty cool. Here's the path. And. Landscape. I think there is uh material, so I have to create one. So let's create. There is this texture which I am planning to use for it, which is also below it, I believe. This is rock cliff, so it's not. So I will go to my materials. To church materials, I'm going to duplicate my rooftiles, I'll call it M I. Road dot. One A. So on and I will try. This is the one. And we don't have M R I made for it, so we have to export and then we make maybe. Because there is this mask map. Which is, I don't know what it is. I green is black. Blue is. Green is black, so it's. H M. More. H M R. A H M R A. So we can either make a master material, which will be much more easier like we're using this. Or if I go here and I duplicate this. And I said duplicate. And I'll call it M M tileable. Uh Mavi. One A. Because I guess it will take time to convert it from there, so it will the H M R A, so H we don't want. Metallic. Are. A. Yeah, so we we do to the M R A H. Is what we do, but they have it like that, so. Yeah. So let's take Mavi. And we. Take the texture. This mask one. So technically it should work. Okay, so. Yeah, it's there, it's not tiling because. We need to see what we did. So yeah, so this is here. With some dirt. And also like the UVs are stretching. Because yeah, it is it is not very square. It was rectangular, so it will. So let's just go with it for now. And what I wanted. Other thing was, can we scatter on it? I don't think so, so we have to scatter manually. So I have bunch of assets in here, so I'll go to foliage and we had. You know, see a bunch of assets. There is one for scattering. But I have from the asset pack, I downloaded and added in here, have something. So I need to see if we, with the content browser call this. So I have this bunch of. It was, it was mountain grassland. I can show you also the scene. Mashes, rocks. On this one. This road, I see that is. They also have road mesh. Look like this. Which we can try also. Adding in there in our. Is this one? There is. This one, which I think is a single path and then double path. Let's try adding this one and see if it works. In our scenario and we can convert it basically afterwards. Select, select all. And. Pline mesh. Let it. Towards. One hundred percent because we need to change the color and everything. So here. Is our pathway material and the brightness offset. Tiling. What I'm thinking is where's the texture here? And if we can replace this with. Because this alpha has in this texture only, so. It's better to just change the color of it. Brightness two, saturation point five. I had to make it look like dirt. Yeah, for now. Right, so yeah, it would works. Basically better than the other one, so we can take, you know, ideas from these assets. And the pack. What I'm looking for is there's push, which is good. But what I'm looking for is. Pebbles. Nice, they have. Grass layers. Roads. Well, these are big, maybe they're not big, maybe that much. This is. Need to go to rocks here, that's. Seems big and we can hover over and see it is like one point five meter. In one axis. This is also three meters, so these are not what we want, we want pebbles and I've seen those. Those must be somewhere. If it's not here, this is. Even this one we can check, plants is not background, it's not. Not this one. Meanwhile, environment. We should props. Mashes, let's see. If we have in here, this is like, this again another. Definitely not the pebbles are not here. Procedural foliage, there are small rock. And here it is. Here. These are again, how much it is? In two meter, this is not. In a big ones, these are. Because I don't want to just simply, you know, make uh small rocks. What we have is good, I can show you also and we can, you know, basically work on top of it. Foliage. This is temporary, open it up all time, this. Nice. One, where is the scale? Scale is. Point two, two point five density, ten. Yes, better. I'll make it five and brush size smaller. So you can. Basically. Place the rocks as in our references, if I show you like this. Okay, more in the corner, more in the middle that we can do. And I can make it. Or smaller. And I think we have random. When your is good. Why it's still? Over that. The the color difference is playing. We can replace this mesh definitely as it's it's not that. Varied. Or using some. Other asset. So this is basically and also. To have any grass which you can manually paint in the middle. So basically we can put the grass and we can paint it in the middle in here. To make it look better. First, I want to change the material on these. For something. More aligning. So it should be in our. To church. Art. By all rocks. This is the one. Have we using cliff rock? To align it with the other things. But we don't want that. It's also not the, well, we just like a random, some some rocks. We can make them better cluster. And better damage basically, that will add much more. Naturality to it. Basically, uh we saw in Wukong one, right? So the large and the more smaller ones. So that we can do. Still in this and we can disperse it more, uh basically making more. It's right now six meter, but this we can. Make it much more spread. Uh as in here, we have made bunch of rocks, right? So similar to those. We can use the tiny ones in there. Hmm, where is the material? Or this? Let me open up the material. Oh, there is color variation that we added. If I show you in in the old session, we made that setting in here, I say. So if you want variation in each rock. How much you want? And the tiling, how much? And yep, then we have. Same old, same old. And we have already decreased the brightness. To blend it more. Yeah, to just to blend it more basically I wanted to. Better blending uh rock. On the ground. Like. And yeah, so this is is much better. Now let me do. If we go back to the camera angle. And I'm bringing my concept, this is what I want to follow in and make this. Surrounding part. Can I overlay it? Window. And do we have? Visibility setting here. Appearance. Yep. It's just for for the sake of it. See, can you see? Put the charge. Here, see. We just almost need to put. The bridge closer. If you want to match. This. I the everything else is right there, it's just if I. See. It's this angle also, I believe, like if we go to. Our camera, I believe it will be much. See. Now if I bring it in here. Now how much? Yeah, so yeah, so this camera angle is different from our. Yeah, that's overall is on right direction basically, what I believe. We can keep this, but overall what I need is this space to be. Much more. Open. So we can. Have this. Because the valley is more valley-ish basically. That's funny. So if I need that space, I can simply landscape. And that's because the river, don't worry about it, don't stress, that's river basically not letting us. Do our thing. So we don't worry too much about it. That's the fun I love about proceduralism. And just stick to the terrain basically. Now we can simply. We can get a space basically simply. By moving these points. Wonder why it is not? Updating the angle, it was usually doing it. Automatically. How we get this slope? As we had in the concept. Coach. And we can definitely make. Okay, yeah, so this we have space we can put around. There. We can make a space around it and put. We place wall around here. For the back and then the path can go from there. Let me take the rock. We simulate. Rocks come from here, see, that's why I love. This. We have placed, so. Even the landscape line is. Look crazy here. She don't care, it's the second spline. We can adjust it again also. And also move out charge if we want to. Little bit more further now. Coolio, this is good. And for the wall, we have something. That piece which we can place around. Here and make a boundary. Just to match it with this. Just to match it with this. So we have smooth. Manage spline L S. Think can we do the end drop on this if I do this up and do end. Yeah drop on there which is nice. Go up press end it drop on the surface below. Which is nice in unreal. I push it up and. Can I do opposite I don't think it's. Yeah but though you have to bring it up and press end. Then it drops. And did not definitely work on this. Why this what this is special? Something is off with this. Yeah always work on these why not those? It's weird. See. It's not working on these but this is some reason. And we can do the same thing we select. All the segments and the mesh. We can take it from there which will mesh we have added. Select all. See it's working on. This for some reason. But not for others o- on the other end basically. And we can confirm it also the the terrain. As we need to go around. I'm making it go round. Okay sure this. We make a compound basically a wall around it so that's what we. Okay hello Milan uh let me let me quickly do this and jump into chat and read. Cool and let's select all the segments. And we say okay do and we have layer six and we say select the segments and. Now we have terrain layer and terrain also confirmed to it. And bridge also we have planned to make it longer so we don't worry that much basically we make a wall around it. And here we keep a wall ended and then wall go from here and then go around. The basically this compound is there. Yeah let me try something if I do W and does it nope? And if I select segment and if I can W now I cannot move the segments. Why is that that's weird. We have one another spline from here to going there so define. Good so yeah so this uh let me come to selection save as. This is gonna it went through a lot of changes this one. And to the church. Maps save. Okay let's look at the chat. Hello Milan welcome thank you very much. Uh yeah it's uh I'm I'm planning to do it early because I have other stuff to do in the evening. Um going to gym sports and other house chores so that's why I'm planning to make it. Earlier now and I'll try to do it daily I know I'm every stream I say I will try to do but trust me guys I'm trying my best. To do it uh early so we you know. Do daily so we at least complete this uh as quickly as possible. Uh because I'm traveling to India also in November so. If you're not able to finish it before then it definitely gonna be prolonged after that. I want to keep the streams uh much more open and free. Uh when I'm in India because I will be mostly busy and going around so I will be doing. Whatever I can uh in there so I don't want to be working on a big project which needs more attention. So I would be mostly give me feedback and working on some four D related stuff uh here and there. So Milan uh I have a question regarding the terrain do we usually build terrain as a single large mesh or we. Do it part by part because I'm seeing you sculpting and feel that uh it get messy and tough to handle. Uh yeah it's basically uh usually uh in open world what happens so usually have tiles basically. It's usually uh if how how under also handle it. Uh if I go here and if we go manage and select okay so now. You'll see oh it's it's. Let me see if I I think it have less but it should. What happened oh come on. It's super slow. Usually the terrain is uh divided into tiles basically there are. I think if there are terrain uh when you create a new one. Oh my it's hang my system is hang so I cannot show but uh usually it's divided into multiple uh. Terrain tile so when you create a new one it asks you how many you want right? So each of these tile can have its own kind of height map data and its own number of layer data. Uh holding inside so when we work with open world and large large terrain so it's usually based on these tiles basically. So each uh tile we work in our area but whenever someone uh. It's it's really tricky because it works in a straight grid and when you have something more diagonal and you need. To work on sometimes the area covers four it's a corner of four tiles basically. So when you work it with the upper force and other things you check out your tile right so the multiple people can work on different tiles. But one tile can only one person can work on it's better than before because if I show you. I don't know if you can. No it's it's super hang. Give it a second. If you can visualize somehow let me just trying I'm trying. It's a brush size. Yep so yeah so now I can show you. Here so see you know this the boxes you see are different tiles in our terrain. Okay so each contains all this layer data and height data and everything so you can work on these one tile at a time. But when you go uh beyond this like imagine this is this corner which have four tiles. So when you working on this you will check out these four tiles. So if someone needs this style they have to wait until you submit otherwise it's a problem before it's like the whole terrain used to be. But it's usually it's a bigger tile it's uh seems uh smaller but it's usually bigger than this like that. Yeah it's like this tile and then this tile and this tile like that it's like a bigger chunk of landscape. So we work in these chunks when we work on uh. Uh you know. Oh oh as as a as a whole basically one chunk or one tile or one component basically and then we. You know submit our changes and Unreal is really good now and Unreal five before it used to be the whole terrain it will be really. One person could work on one terrain and. And now it's there is custom so multiple people can work on same level even even uh even if someone who is like placing props in here in the scene. So they can basically you know do place props in here so it just add as like an Excel more rows in the Excel sheet. It it is really nice and also someone can you know put paint the foliage while someone is working on the terrain. Like sculpting of it it's really powerful. Uh but most of the time we had to work on terrain and the foliage painting altogether it do. Uh seem cumbersome but I did this for years. Uh that's it just pleasing props in the terrain that's why I'm struggling right now that's what I said last time also. Uh and our water is gone again stupid if it did not work on resimulation I'm gonna kill this one. Where is the resimulate button? See it's dead stupid water. Okay no worries. Uh unreal guys but this is basically uh is how we handle basically without trouble. Uh uh so yeah uh let me know guys like if you want to have a meetup uh we can arrai- definitely arrange a meetup. Uh possibly in Delhi that will be much better if more guys are there. Uh but I will be traveling around to Bangalore I will be coming to Bangalore Mumbai. Uh to Kampur possibly to Jaipur. Delhi I have relatives all over the place so I will be visiting all the cities so if you are there you can come. Uh want to meet up drop me a message we can plan. Uh I don't I've got some question regarding the spline tool you just use now can it be used? For electric poles and roadblocks I'm still stuck on what the model on is like now for that you have to use PCG or blueprints. Uh it uh you cannot do it with this way. PCG is the best way it's super easy it just uh um uh search on YouTube. And I'm also I tried it I watched a tutorial also to make it so I'm not cannot show you the right way but uh it's a PCG. Is the best way to make those slide poles and I have this link open where I can show you also. Uh when I was studying it recently as well and where is it? Give me a second. Yeah here only so it's uh scans library which is bought by Quicksol I believe. So their uh aspirations basically for me to scan. This is Gregor's Baran I think who was the founder of it. Uh and this one right so it's basically have all the same stuff. So you we can you can basically search here and go let's see. On Fab how it is see this is. Scattering plus you create splines and uh and a bunch of fun stuff so they using all these tools. Hmm I think there will be demo. Yeah here see so this is all they creating using PCG so you can you don't go crazy basically oh I'm not sharing sorry. So this is the one is uh from scans library it's when we go far crime app demo so it's. This is free you can download the demo and just play with it but here as you see they use PCG and you know spline to put roads. Right and uh you know scattering again they use PCG they use PCG to scatter everything on the terrain. And then PCG can talk to each other all the different nodes okay this uh layer. And basically all the procedural tools and everything how we can do is the scattering is one is angle. If there is a certain angle on the terrain and second is layers which layers are there uh and what we want to put in what. And then on the road also when we put the spline it create a new layer we can add and then it can define okay. This is a spline good road and this is for the railway stuff like that so it's PCG is the best option for that you say they are. They have bunch of tools and I put this uh this as a diagram example so I will build these diagrams afterwards. So again bunch of PCG tools which you have to use for this is the best option. I mean I tried to build a terrain I feel terribly mesh build in blender import into Unreal try to add trees through painting but. And they didn't recognize the mesh as a yes you have to import it as a height map. That if you remember in the very first one we sculpted in Blender but we bake the height map so it's better to bake it. You can do it in uh uh in X normal or in blender itself or what you can do you can take the mesh and take it to Gaia. Uh world creator or world machine. Any software they take mesh as input and then you work on top of it and then export them height map and then import it in Unreal. And Gaia can have a plugin directly imported you can do that or you can import it. And remember Unreal have a technical uh a number so it you can just imagine. One pixel is one meter in Unreal so the depending on how big you want you can go by that size. So if you need uh two fifty meter of surface so you will give go with the two fifty by two fifty height map. Uh I can show you Unreal terrain. Technical I will share the link in the chat also technical talk. Okay so let me share this one first and so. Here is the the one I was talking about uh you can download this demo. And here is the technical guide. Hmm share full screen here okay so I'm sending a little chat also I'm sending the link. So here you see this is uh basically if you use component two X so it create larger component but it is like how many. Uh tiles it gonna create so roughly uh you know. This is the size you're gonna pick if you want a. Two fifty meter terrain so this is the resolution otherwise Unreal try. For half a kilometer uh or or. Yeah for half kilometer for one kilometer terrain two kilometer terrain four and eight kilometer terrain. Yeah so it this is it goes by this I don't know if what is the higher number from this I don't know how it works but see as you see. By hundred to convert into this many centimeter so again one meter. Okay so yeah so this many four kilometer. Yeah this is roughly basically and uh Z is always shitty and unreal that. You have I watched a tutorial how they manually fix it you see this is how there is a math for converting Z range of it. Um I see they're converting five which I'd hate converting it uh scaling it down. But what you can do if you have a height as hundred then use this math. Yeah so how much it is then it is the range so the you divide it with that basically again. Don't ask me why they do that why they can just give a value or like Unity had long time back when I u- used to use Unity. It have values simply when you import the terrain ask what is the height of it like it have. Uh not just not this hundred this transform stays same. But when you import it's like two fifty six or two fifty six right and then it asks like what is the height of it. And then you give okay it's like five twelve meter that you can also get from your. Uh Gaia world machine everything can tell you what are the dimensions of the thing. So then you just skip it just manually do it like why you have to do this math I don't understand. Epic come on. A small thing, they can fix it, so yeah, stupid math we have to do. Uh but don't try to put it mesh because mesh is super high and maybe N A I it won't work without the terrain. But now the terrain have N A I D support also, uh like they have shown in this Captain America game, I think. Uh I haven't tested it, so can't help it, but I would love to try it, like the thousand things I want to. I'm currently putting it in all ascent I have made to until now, I'm currently putting in all the assets I have made. Ah okay, that's wonderful, yeah, that's a good habit basically. To put everything in there in one level, I have uh made one single project for all of my projects at one point. Where all of my unfinished project, blog dot project and everything is in one level. So I can usually use things from one form another, so it's always helps, and. When uh you're getting back, it means you're on vacation, I don't have a job, I'm vacation always, so. I'm in vacation mode every day, that's why I'm lazy to not stream every day, so, uh that's how I spoiled myself. But yeah, it's a vacation, I have some marriages to attend to and to job. Uh good luck with the bank balance, a lot of it is. Yeah, yeah, it's uh it's there, like I bought a lot of gifts, that box you say it just have a lot of gifts in there for everybody. So it's there, um yeah, it is cost a lot, I always save before going. Um yes, we'll see, we'll see how that goes, uh but it's mostly, I'm coming to Bangalore to meet the people. Uh and I always go to meet my group of friends there. So yeah, so if we, if you're around the town, uh we'll surely meet up, I was planning to do a uh feature pass meetup in Delhi. Because most of them are from north, so if you're from south also, you can learn, we can do it in Bangalore maybe. But you can surely plan the meetup and, you know, have a have a lunch together. Or we go to Leon Grill in Bangalore, that's perfect, I always go there, I love the burgers there. That's there, so yeah, so that's uh pretty much here, like if anyone is meeting up and want a beer from Czech Republic, then you know. I'll buy extra beer for you, one can for you also, so you can try how Czech beer tastes like. Okay, so yeah, so that's uh uh in the question, if you have any other question, just let me know. And I believe I will wrap up for now, because I have a bunch of leaves to scan, I'm still scanning, that's why I'm. Cannot uh take more stuff, but I try to, you know, live stream daily, so we work on this uh every day. So I'm I'm liking like the amount of progress we made on the scene. And with few hours every day, I think we can make a lot of progress. So I will uh take it from now, I'm super hungry, I will have lunch and then if you have any question, uh keep progressing on your scene. I will do the, we'll do the feedback session as normal as before and. And as always, if you have any question, any doubt, if you're stuck, need me to step in to get you unstuck. Uh I'm just one message away, you can tag Future Pass Academy in the Discord server, uh that's me uh always so. You can a- ask me any question related to uh your project, whatever we are working on. Or anything uh game art in general, uh I will be there to help, okay? So yeah, so overall, like thank you very much for joining in, I'm happy, I know it's a bit shambles, but I'm trying to make it earlier now. Uh so because I have a bunch of stuff in the evening, uh and I cannot uh. Uh you know, continue in the evening, oh, so just so I will. Uh Milan is okay, it's okay, we'll try to do something uh in there, so I'm coming in November, so. I will be there till January, so we have time, uh. Uh, no worries, the beer is on me, I can catch you. So yeah, no, otherwise we will do virtual one, okay? So let me know, if you need it, I will post it also, like when I come home, I will send it. Uh by courier, just going to you if you want. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much and I'll try to do it every day now, uh I promise, it's just like I wake. I work till late night and then I don't wake up, then the day pass so quickly, it's already four, I just wake up like one hour ago, I feel like. But yeah, so I will try to do it again two to four, I will try to keep and then maybe ten to twelve, I want to get into like in the morning. And then the afternoon I want to do two streams, with one for the work, one for the. Uh other projects I'm working on, so maybe showcasing that also, uh like maybe scanning setup and how I'm working there, when making foliage. Uh working on portfolio, scanning, processing the scans and a lot of stuff. Uh so one for the bootcamp, one for the other project and yeah, so that's what you can do. Uh I'll try to be more regular and that's why I'm putting it again and again, so I build myself more accountable to do it. So yeah, I'll do my best and you guys also do your best and as always, I'm always here to help you if you're stuck. And I will see you in the next one, take care, until then, bye.